Welcome to the May 8, 2019 Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in executive session since 6:00 PM discussing personnel matters and contractual And we will now do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have introductions?
Dave Hurst.
Chris Meyer.
Willow Bear.
Jonathan Fishfine.
Jody Monroe.
Michael Cooper.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Christine Beck.
Meredith Marioni.
Judy Kehoe.
First up is approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the April 17, 2019 regular Board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All invited here?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstractions? That passes. Do we have a representative from the Student Senate? Nope. Okay. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. We do have some winter athletes and some art students here this evening. Before we introduce them, I'd like to just share a couple of announcements. We had some students that were recently recognized in the New York State Economic Challenge. Liam Carl, Javon Chari, Connor Chung, and Ethan Royka finished among the state's top teams at the challenge. It was April 7th at Hunter College. The group was the only upstate New York team to earn an invitation to join the most competitive bracket of the competition, and they finished fourth in the state. So I'd like to congratulate them and their coach, Jason Majeski. Also, we have a couple of students who are recognized as part of a select group of the region's highest achieving students. I'd like to congratulate Darren Guma Stopp and Olivia Namkun. They've been invited to represent Bethlehem at the 33rd Annual Dinner. They were each able to select a teacher who would influence them, and Darren is recognizing Anthony Wilson, who teaches social studies at the high school, and Olivia Namkun selected Ms. Turo, Eileen Turo, as her teacher to honor. Also, I just wanted to provide a quick update. We have the School Start Time Committee in place, and we had hired school bus consultants to do a study on this. They were in the district last week, and they met with all of the committee members in small groups to talk about what are our priorities, what are our challenges. They got a lot of data from our Transportation Department, and their goal is to have a final report for us to consider what some of our options might be by the end of the school year. So I met with them a couple times. I thought they were very good. They seemed really like they knew what was going on. They've done this work with many other districts, so I was very impressed with their work.
All right. Silly question. So in terms of options, they're going to tell us like what times we could offer bus runs, or how long would it take each bus run?
They are doing an analysis of our routing, the ridership, the start times, end times, what are the non-negotiables. One of the things that came out very clearly was that after-school time for high school students was extremely important. So they will recommend what are some things you can consider. You can do this if you're willing to give this up, or this is not an option, we don't recommend it. Are there any costs involved to consider? What constituent groups may you need to do more outreach with? And they've done follow-up. This is kind of their initial work, but in other districts, they have done follow-up work related to those reports if the district chose to.
Thank you.
Can I? Sorry, I'm just sort of going out of turn, because I did meet with them, and I just they, it was clear that they had done this analysis for a number of other districts in a number of states, and it wasn't sort of a new topic, and they were also familiar with sort of the science of bell-times, and it was not a unique new thing for them.
Right.
And one of the things we discussed was the option of flipping elementary school and high school, and they were going to specifically look at what that might look like, and would you need extra buses, and is it feasible to do that? The other thing that I thought was useful was separate from start-time analysis, it sounded like they were also going to give us some feedback around any other efficiencies that could be found within the bus routes the way they are, even assuming we don't change anything with start-time.
Yes. Yep, I thought that was good.
I was in the meeting with Willow as well, and I was very impressed by their knowledge, not only of the topic in general, but also specifically about the district and its needs. So I have very good feeling about using them.
So are we going to start with the athletes, or? Is it first? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to welcome our student athletes, their parents, and their families. We do this at the end of each season, so obviously tonight we're honoring our winter athletes. These are our section champions and state qualifiers, as well as noting which of our winter teams earned the NISFA distinction of Scholar-Athlete Teams. So with that being said, our girls' and boys' indoor track and field teams, our competitive cheer team, both boys' and girls' basketball, our gymnastics and boys' swim and dive all honor, all earn that distinction where they had a team average of over 90. So awesome accomplishment. As always, generally over 80% of our varsity programs achieve that. So the first team we'd like to honor are our state qualifiers on our gymnastics program. I'd like to also introduce our coach, Julie Bouchard, who's here. Coach Bouchard does a fantastic job. First athlete I'd like to bring up is Mia Farley. Mia qualified in the uneven bars as an alternate qualifier. Next up, Allison Gray. Allison had a fantastic season, qualified on balance beam, vault, and floor. Our next state qualifier, Kiara Poust. She qualified as a balance beam alternate qualifier. And finally, Trinity Walters, who qualified for vault. Congratulations. The next program we would like to honor is our boys' swim and dive team. We had a first-year coach, Coach Nate Foley. Unfortunately, Nate told me a little while ago he was diagnosed with walking pneumonia, so he is not feeling well, but he wanted his swimmers and divers to know that he was thinking about you tonight. The team not only ranked third during the states, but also came in third during sectionals, and we have five swimmers tonight who had fantastic seasons. First, I'd like to bring up Joey Chiarella. Joey was part of the 200 free, 500 free, 200 free relay, and 400 free relay. John Janeski. John also the 200 MR, the 100 free, 100 backstroke, and the 400 relay. Max Kebak, 200 medley relay, 200 free relay, and the 400 free relay. Keith Nguyen, 200 medley relay, the 200 free relay, and the 100 breaststroke. And Jason Wu, also a member of that 200 medley relay, the 200 free relay, and the 400 free Congratulations. Our next program, our indoor track and field team coached by Darnell Douglas. We had two section champions. I'd first like to bring up Matt Cavallari, who won the 1,000 meter. Come on up, Matt. And Jillian Roder, Jillian also the 1,000 meter champion for the section. Now, we also had state qualifiers. Matt also qualified for the 1,600 meter. I'd like to recognize Jason Rapazzo. Jason qualified in the 300 meter. Jason, is he here? Obviously, Jillian also qualified for the intersectional relay, and I'd like to bring up Andrew Stein. Andrew qualified for the weight throw. Congratulations. And the finally, final program that we'll be recognizing tonight, great group of young men coached by Dylan Lappi. Coach Lappi, wave to the crowd. Our ice hockey team has, over the last probably four or five years, have been the top team in the Capital District High School Hockey League. We have now won back-to-back section championships, last year being the first in program history, and we all know it's very difficult to repeat. So not only did these guys win the regular season championship, the section championship, they were also the regional finalists. I can't say enough about them. So why don't we meet them? We have many Bevenus. We'll start with first, Michael. Come on up, Mike. Michael was the Section Two Player of the Year. His brother, William Bevenu. Benjamin Bryant. Connor Carroll. Patrick Kavanaugh. I know Justin Chanelly's here. Come on up, Justin. Mason De La Salas. Anthony Dennison. Walter Gould. Best goaltender in the section, Mike Crujolik. Ben Levine. Nicholas Lafitte. Nate Plummer. Luke Rowe. Jordan Scarlett. The good news is most of them are not graduating, so we're going to go for three next year. Thank you very much.
Okay. We do have some artists here as well that we'd like to recognize, and Mrs. Painter had planned to be here, and unfortunately, she is homesick, so I don't know, must be something going around this time of year. But to give you a little bit of information about our art students, we have students, some students were selected to be part of the 28th Annual Fulton Montgomery Community College Regional Exhibition. This was on display from April 4 through the 17th. The exhibit included 80 student works, which were selected from 381 works submitted from 15 school districts. So this was quite a competitive competition. The students being recognized here this evening have done a great job, and I'd like to also thank their teachers who helped them. So I'd like to recognize Ellie Aspen. Images, there's Maggie's work. Claire Adema. Alora Ravenstein. Is she here? And Ella Trainer. Okay, our next group. Okay, our next group of students participated in Art in Three Dimensions juried exhibit, was on display at Mahanesson High School during the month of February, and which had been selected from 242 works that were submitted from 18 high schools. This exhibit was organized through the New York State Art Teachers Association and the Capital Area Art Supervisors Organizations. I'd like to recognize Maggie Forsa. Maggie there? How about Julia Higgins? Sydney Sokah.
That concludes my report.
Next up is the Board of Education report. Last Wednesday, we had the Meet the Candidates Night here in the high school. The three candidates who are running for the board seats this year had some tough questions to answer, and they all did very well. And I want to thank the community members who came out to see the event, and if you didn't see it, it's posted on our website, and I strongly encourage all of the voters to watch it so you can get to know the candidates before you vote. That's all I have. Anything else?
I just wanted to recognize that we had some successful bike-to-school days, or walk-in bike-to-school days today at the elementary schools and at the middle school. I saw a lot of kids out there on their bicycles. And it's a reminder to everybody to drive slowly this time of year, in the morning and after school. And then also, just a note for the Board, if anyone is looking for something to do this weekend, the middle school is putting on their production of their staged creations, Nightmare on Kenwood. I do not know what exactly it is about, but it looks like it's going to be a good time, so.
Traffic in the morning at the middle school.
Possibly, but I believe they're doing a show Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, maybe Sunday, too.
Anyone else? Chris?
The bike-to-school day was a huge success over at Hammergrau. I was there in the afternoon to help pick up, and I mean, I was talking to the staff inside, and they were saying some of the buses that were coming in only had like six or seven kids on it, like bikes were all across the grass at Hammergrau. So it's just a great event, and just on a personal note, what's so fantastic about it is that, you know, my two boys were absolutely ecstatic about going to school today. Like, I mean, they love school in general, but like this was a circled event that had to be done, and just to be excited about school like that, the activities that they created are absolutely wonderful.
Anyone else? Okay. And I neglected to ask if there were any pick students here tonight. Okay? Your obligation is to stay until 9:00 PM or the end of the meeting, whichever comes first. And if we go till 9:00, we'll take a break so you can sign out. You need to sign the sheets that are up here, and if you have any paperwork that the, for a board member to sign, just let us know. Okay. Next up is our 2019-20 school budget hearing, and I'll need a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstractions? Okay. And Ms. Kehoe will kick it off with a presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Over the last few nights, Ms. Monroe and I have been going around, nights and days, giving various presentations to the community about our proposed budget, and we have talked about the strategic planning initiative that we've done over the course of this last year, and it was really exciting, almost like looking at the budget with fresh eyes when we're able to go to the various PTO or Progress Club groups and talk about the four main emphases in our plan, and how we have tied the budget together, and with all of the changes that we've approved in that, really dovetails wonderfully with the plan that we have put forth. Our goal, of course, was to get to a balanced budget, which we have done. Our revenues are totaling $100,829,000, with the bulk of that being in school taxes for our funding sources. That levy increase is a 2.03% increase in the overall levy. We were relatively flat on our state aid and other revenue sources, and we were able to bring the levy in well below the maximum allowable tax levy amount and below the rate of inflation, just due to trimming our costs and making sure that we fit that within the To make it very clear for the public, because I know this can be a very confusing area for them when we start talking about levies and rates and what the tax cap means, the levy is the increase that the district will see based on the 2.03% levy increase, and that is the additional amount of money, approximately $1.3 million, that we will collect. How that levy gets spread between all of the taxpayers within the two communities of Bethlehem and New Scotland is where the tax rates come into play, and that is calculated by looking at changes in assessed values, changes in the equalization rates, which measures how the homes are assessed relative to recent sales data that the state issues, and based on those factors, the rates are calculated. I will have estimated rates for the community this evening, with the caveat that, of course, the towns have not finalized those totals, and we will not have final rates until August. And the tax cap is the calculation that we go through to make sure that we are in compliance with the state laws on that, and so that when we do adopt the budget, we make sure that we are not going above that cap, because if we were to do so, we would need 60% of the voters to approve the budget, as opposed to the 50% plus one that we will need based on our adoption. This chart shows you the trending on our levies over the last few years since the tax cap rules came into play, and the orange is the actual levy amount, the gray bars are the calculated tax cap amounts that we could go up to, and you can see in almost every one of those years, the levy that has been adopted is below the tax cap. We were at 3.54% that we could go to per that formula this year, and the budget that was passed is at the 2.03. The five-year average tax levy is only 1.2%, so we are pleased that we were able to bring that in at a relatively low level. The state aid amounts are at 28.2. We are, while we would always welcome additional state aid, after the last few years where we had experienced some pretty significant reductions in our state aid, the fact that it's relatively stable is a good thing for the district, and that has helped us bring structure and stability to the overall budget. On the expenditure side, this chart helps you see that the vast majority of the resources have been allocated to the instructional programs, K-12, and to our special education and student services that we offer. The fringe benefits, of course, would be distributed to those costs as well. We have the support services for O&amp;M and transportation, and then debt service making up the balance of those totals. And most of those areas were fairly unremarkable. There aren't significant changes from the current year's budget to the amount that is proposed for next year. Each of these next slides will just give you a quick recap of some of the more significant areas. On the fringe benefits, also a rather unremarkable year, although if you look, that the totals in fact declined, I guess that makes it a little bit remarkable, because usually that's going up higher. We were fortunate with our health insurance rates. That's under 3% for the overall increase. Low single digits bring us great joy in our budgeting. We also benefited from reductions in the teachers' retirement system pension contribution rates and the employees' retirement system as well. So that allowed us to keep those costs either flat for ERS or slightly declining for TRS. Our debt service, the significant change for this coming year was the fact that we are beginning to incur debt service costs. We will be paying interest on the $32 million capital project that is underway now. We also will have some additional building aid for every dollar that we're spending on our debt service payments for principal and interest. We get about 2/3 of that back in the form of reimbursement-based building aid from the state. Our transportation budget declined slightly due to some savings on salary numbers primarily, but no changes in the program area itself in terms of what we're offering. The technology budget went up slightly, and this provides all of the technology resources for not only our students, but also for our staff. The athletics budget increased slightly. The nature of those changes are per these additions that the Board had approved in the review, and these were essentially adjustments in the teams and the levels that are going to be offered next year based on changes in interest from the students participating in those sports. The O&amp;M budget is slightly higher, primarily because, thank you to the Board, you had approved some, a line item for funding for refreshing some of the furniture within the buildings. We have what we like to call vintage furniture in a number of the We have what we like to call vintage furniture in a number of the different classrooms, because they haven't been replaced since decades ago, when the last capital project was done that improved those classrooms. So by putting the line item in for $75,000, that gives us a pool of resources that will allow replacement on those furniture items, and also will allow some of the classrooms to start to use some newer forms of seating, seating arrangements that might enable some additional group activities and collaboration with the students. Also included within the budget is another capital outlay program. This is essentially a mini capital project. If the budget is passed, it has $100,000 included as a transfer to the capital reserve. That will go towards replacement of one of our bus lifts, which isn't fully working as it's supposed to due to its age and condition. The K-12 budget is up to $33.9 million, broken out by each of those areas, and there were a number of modifications to that program. There was a reduction in the noon hour aid time in the elementary schools due to a reduction, or I guess I'll call it a restoration. We had increased recess by five minutes a few years ago. That was evaluated and determined that we should roll that back to its prior levels so that we could increase the time for the specials, for the students in PE, music, and art. There were other increases at the elementary level, most notably was some funding to get some additional science kits so that we can spark some STEM learning in our youngest students. The middle school, the largest addition there, was the funding of a social worker position. We had had the board add that in this current year's budget, based on student needs, and that has been rolled into the next year's budget as well. In the high school, we have the addition of a social worker, and this relates to what I had mentioned early on about how we're aligning our funding to go with the student needs as identified within our strategic plan, so to provide additional counseling and resources for our students. Under the miscellaneous items, one of the changes that I wanted to point out to you is for the Saratoga Center for the Family. Just after the last meeting, we were able to get the updated pricing on that, and that is slightly higher than we had expected. It's $45,000 instead of $30,000, but as you recall, we had some extra money within teacher salaries due to some retirements, so we were able to pull from those savings in order to fund that additional amount. And also, we were able to settle the principal's contract, so that will require another $43,000 into that line item, and we had also reserved a portion of the breakage amount on the salaries to fund that. So it didn't result in a change in the overall totals, but that is an update from our last meeting. Our special ed and student services went down slightly. Again, most of that was in salaries, and the changes that we had talked about on the reductions, we're anticipating that we can reduce, based on student needs, two positions in the program, and then a .4 for the teacher of the visually impaired, based on student changes. The additions is an occupational therapist. Again, that was added in this budget year, but we needed to roll that into the 1920 year, and then also the addition of a psychologist position. If you're looking for additional information about any of these changes, as a reminder, all of the prior board meetings are available on our website, as are all of the presentations that can give you as much detail or more, if you would like. The additions for the instructional program and special ed essentially covered all areas of the school, and as did the reductions, so that we could spread them throughout the K-12 program without causing any significant impact. We also projected our results for the current year so that we could gauge what we were able to do relative to our fund balance and the restricted components for that. Right now, we are projecting about a $2.8 million surplus in our operating portion of the budget, but because we have the transfer as planned to put in the $4.9 million as funding for the $32 million project, instead of going out and bonding that amount, that will show up as an expense, and we will have a net loss of $2 million based on current projections. That $2 million applied to the fund balance amounts will drop it down slightly, but we were thrilled that with the passage of the budget, there is finally authorization for the district to have, for any district, to have a teachers' retirement system reserve. So we had approval from the board at an earlier meeting to include that, and you'll see that we are anticipating funding that with $500,000 at the end of this fiscal year. You'll note the $4.9 million coming out of the 2015 capital reserve to drop that to $5.1 million. And then lastly, the other item on there is the creation of a new capital reserve, the 2019 capital reserve, which will be appearing on the ballot. It requires voter approval both to create it and to spend the money from that. Our undesignated component is the piece that has to be under 4%, so that will be the case as of the end of the year. And again, these are projections. We'll give you the updated numbers once we close out the year. We also continue to do a multi-year budget forecast, just to make sure that there aren't any surprises coming down the pike for us, and we continue to see structural balance with our finances, although we noted that next year will be a little bit tighter. It isn't anything that is going to be too difficult for us to close, based on our current projections. So the four propositions for the school district that will be appearing on the ballot on May 21st is consideration of the budget for next year at the $100.8 million. There will be two board positions available. We will have the bus purchase proposition, and then the proposition about whether or not we can create that 2019 capital reserve. So for the board seats, we have Michael Cooper, who has served for nine years and has indicated that he will not be running again, and Jonathan Fishbein's position is also expiring, and he is running again. So you will see the three candidates that will appear on the ballot, in the order in which they will appear on the ballot, are Brendan McCann, Jonathan Fishbein, and Wendy Sampson. So the two highest vote-getters will be the people who will fill the board seats. The bus purchase proposition is to replace four of our large buses and 10 of our smaller buses, as we had talked about in transportation. We will sell the older buses that are close to the end of their useful life and then replace them in accordance with the replacement plan that we've identified for transportation. The creation of the reserve, we had talked about that earlier, will be on there. And then last but not least, the date, May 21st, so from 7:00 AM until 9:00 PM, the polls will be open, and if voters are not able to be there on that day, they can vote by absentee ballot, and those applications can be picked up from the district clerk. So that concludes the quick overview of the budget, and time for public comment.
Does the board have any questions before we go to the public?
No.
Okay. I just have a short statement to read. Tonight, we are holding the public hearing on our proposed budget as required by law. The notice of this hearing was published in the spotlight, and a copy of the proof of publication will be included within our official minutes. At this time, I invite any members of the public to speak who wish to offer up comments, either for or against, on the proposed budget. I ask that you please state your name for the record prior to offering your remarks, and if you could come up to the microphone, that would be great. Anyone? No? Okay. Then can I have a motion to close our public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Okay. Next, we will recognize visitors on an agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on an agenda item? Finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through six.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? We want to thank the Scotts Miracle-Gro Foundation for their donation to Hammagrail Elementary. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 10.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through seven.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through eight.
Point of order.
Yes.
I'd like to isolate out from item four, the policy, Policy 2160, School District Officer and Employee Code of Ethics, and Policy 9120.1, Conflict of Interest.
Okay, so first we'll take up items one through eight without Policies 2160 and Policy 9120.1.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I had a question on a couple of other ones.
Sure.
So, Policy...
First, we need to...
Oh, do that first.
Take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Now, discussion.
Did you have a question on other policies, and you wanted to isolate them out?
Well, if we're opening discussion about any of the policies, I don't care about isolating them from the vote. I just had a question. Go ahead.
No, you're first.
Okay, so on 6150 budget transfers, I was just, this stuff confuses me. So it looks like we took out the board authority to review annual transfers, and I'm wondering how that differs from the fund transfers in Policy 6130.
We'll let Jimmy handle that.
Yeah.
Fund transfers requires board approval, and that is when, for instance, we recently approved the $4.9 million to be moved from the general fund capital reserve into the capital reserve. So those will always require board approval. Transfers are when we're moving money between one line item to another line item, and practically speaking, the board does not approve those. You see the end results, you're approving that within the reports where we show the budget to actual. All of the transfers are initiated by the treasurer, and they're signed by Jody as the superintendent. So that was a change really to reflect how we are currently doing it for those transfers between individual line items.
Okay. That makes sense, thank you. I had just a small question on 6231, which is our Title I funding policy, which mentions the ESEA, and I was wondering if that was now supposed to be the ESSA, or if we're still referring to the ESEA?
Dave wants to answer that one.
ESSA is a reauthorization of the ESEA. ESEA is 1965, that's the original law.
Right.
It then was reauthorized as NCLB and reauthorized as ESSA, but they're still all under the original umbrella.
All means the same thing. Just checking. Sorry. On 5151, which is our homeless children, and I don't remember if it's 5151 or 5151R, but we took preschool services out of one part, but then not out of another part, and I didn't know if that was an oversight, if we meant to take preschool services out in the event that we offered them or they were eligible for them.
So we took it out of the first paragraph?
But then they're mentioned either later in the same policy or in the regulation that goes along with it.
I see what you're saying. The policy itself, the first paragraph in 5151, we took out, including preschool education, but on the number five on the second page, we took out Head Start, but left in preschool services.
Okay.
There's a reason.
I can't remember what are, there was a reason why.
I mean, I assume it would be whatever services they're eligible for, right, which is the rest of that sentence, so.
Do you need to take it off the first reading to re-review?
I don't know that it changes the meaning.
Can you just scroll up so we can see just above the first one? Well, I believe that the two paragraphs are different. The first paragraph says that we will be giving all students, whether or not they're homeless or not, access to the same free and appropriate public education. We don't offer...
Preschool.
Preschool public education to any of our students. The second time we mention it talks about providing preschool services to those who are eligible for those preschool services. So I think we're talking about two different things.
Do we ever have a situation where a special needs child requires preschool services?
My recollection is that was the conversation.
Kathy, correct. We do, they're special education students, we provide preschool services to, who qualify?
So, do you see what you have?
Too much to say.
Special education students do qualify for preschool services. Yes.
So a homeless special education student in that second paragraph who qualified the preschool services makes sense to leave in that.
Yes.
Right. All right.
And in the first paragraph, that was referring to all students.
District-wise, gotcha.
So we needed to strike it out there.
Okay. Sorry, guys.
No, it's good to clarify that.
Anything else?
I have one more. 5252 is our extra classroom fund policy and corresponding regulations, and I know sort of from audit committee discussions and other presentations that we've identified some risks around depositing funds raised within that context.
Policy 52.
It's 5252.
5252.
So my question, I guess, was, there's a reference to each extra classroom activity or club making their own rules around how monies are handled, and I just wasn't sure if that's how we wanted, how we intended to maintain that going forward, or whether we had an intention to standardize when money would be deposited and how that's handled.
Is that in the regulation?
I think it might be in the corresponding regulation. Yeah. I'm sorry, I don't have them all in front of me, just my notes.
I mean, there are procedures on how they are supposed to be depositing their monies, and that is per the state ed guidance for them. That spells out in great detail the procedures that they are using. They do get the training in that every year from the club auditor and club treasurer for both the middle school and the high school funds, so it should be consistent. They're not really able to go make up their own procedures, because we give them the controls via that pamphlet. We do have edits coming on the accounting policy, and that also gets specific with when and how much, you know, how frequently they should be depositing those funds.
Can you keep scrolling down just a little bit more?
The flexibility is on the carry-forward funds, is that the section that you were referring to?
I'm sorry, I wish I had brought it.
Because the carry-forward funds, we've had many conversations at the Audit Committee level, because some of them are maintaining some significant balances. So the intention of this language was so that we give the clubs flexibility, that if they identify we need more money as we close out the year, because we have certain costs that, like musicals, for instance, they have to lay out funds for all of the costumes and the rights...
rights to the performances, and they wouldn't have money unless they carried that forward. So this language allows them to make the case for how much they need. In some instances, they might be saving for something that they can't raise in one year, so it allows them to build up to that over a multiple-year period.
But we have talked in the Audit Committee about strengthening the controls on the extracurricular funds because, and standardizing it a little more, because we did see that there was some discrepancies between the way one club might handle it versus the other, so that has come up, Willow, that it should be looked at.
Yeah, and I don't know that that means we need to not vote on this version, it can always be updated in the future.
Because there's a large amount of cash typically flowing through those things, and is, every single year will be identified as a higher-risk area. We do talk about it at every single Audit Committee when we're reviewing the year-end reports for that reason, and the auditors acknowledge that that is common, they remind us that these clubs exist so that the students can become familiar with proper procedures for collecting money and then also for dispersing it, what does supporting documentation consist of.
And then just overall, there were, it just noted that our twelve-thirty, which is the participation at meetings, we had provided feedback last time, and that was addressed, and that worked well this time, so thank you for adding language around how community members can add agenda items. In the budget planning policies, six-one-one-zero, I thought adding the multi-year review was a great addition. In the two policies that Jonathan pulled out, ninety-one twenty and twenty-one sixty, I-
We'll discuss those.
Okay. Okay, other than those, that was it. I just, it was a ton of work, and I really appreciate everything that the Policy Committee did to go into this, because it was a lot of work just to read them, so I can imagine how much work you guys put into it.
Thank you for working with Mike, I know you guys have been trying really hard to get through most of them before Mike's last day, and I'm sure he'll be happy never to see another policy again.
I submitted the last section to Brittany late this afternoon, lucky you.
So thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, anybody else have any? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next, we will take up policies twenty-one sixty and ninety-one twenty point one. I have a motion.
So moved.
So moved.
I'm sorry, discussion.
Thank you, thank you. The goal of a conflict of interest policy is to help identify conflicts of interest and to prevent conflicts of interest. I had asked the committee and provided language to identify potential, or perceived rather, conflicts of interest, and that language was not included. My concern is that if the idea of the policy is to identify conflicts of interest and perceived conflicts of interest, that you need to have a definition of what they are. You need to let people know what to be looking for, and without a definition of perceived conflict of interest, my concern is that that is going to be glossed over, it's going to allow people to engage in what will end up as a perceived conflict of interest with the community, and with no guidance from the policy, and we will end up with dealing with that issue. I would prefer that the conflict of interest policy fully identify, because again, how can you know what is a perceived conflict of interest if there's no definition?
Well, I'll respond first. The board did, the Policy Committee did look at the language that you suggested, we also looked at the NISBA policy, and we've looked at other district policies. Our concern was that perceived, people can have different perceptions, and so it's hard to put into policy just saying perceived conflict of interest, because that can mean a multitude of things to any number of people. The intent of the policies is to provide guidance to the district and the administration on what to do when someone brings up a question of conflict of interest or code of ethics. It's not intended to get into such specificity, so that was, and Meredith and Holly, please weigh in if I haven't covered our discussion, but that's why we decided that, and again, based on looking at other policies, including the one from NISBA, we didn't feel it was prudent to include that language.
I agree, we talked about putting in the language about a perceived conflict of interest, but we did not put it in there because if a member of the community feels like there may be a conflict of interest, then that is a conflict of interest and it comes in under this policy. So we did not feel the need to break out perceived conflict of interest versus conflict of interest, because if someone is perceiving it that way, it should be treated as a conflict of interest, and it should go through the same procedure and policy that we're laying out, so we did not feel that it was necessary to put in specific language regarding a perceived conflict of interest.
So I'm going to take that one step further, just, so let's say this policy is okay, and the language is okay, and we leave out the perceived conflict of interest, how do we as a board, or how do you feel individually as board members, feel that it's okay, and I want this to be a positive conversation and an honest conversation, I don't want, I'm trying really hard not to put any personal emotion into it, but I'm going to be direct, how do we feel that is okay to appoint individuals, maybe it's a hiring policy, that create a conflict of interest? We're appointing them, they create a conflict of interest, we have coaches, we have directors that have personal financial gain when we hire them in a appointment to the position that they're in. This policy doesn't address that, so either we change this policy, or we need to create a new one which addresses that, because we've hired people that have a direct conflict of interest. And I'm interested as individual board members, and again, I want an open, honest conversation, how do you feel about that? Because I feel that we are doing a disservice to the students in our community by hiring people to appointed positions that have personal financial gain, so I would like individual comments on that, maybe we have it another time and we take it off again, so everybody can have time to think about it. Or we talk about creating a new policy, but we aren't addressing the real issue, we're skirting the issue, all of us.
I disagree, I feel that we are actually addressing the issue, to answer your question, I feel that this policy does what we need to do. What you're talking, what I hear, I just want to make sure I hear what I'm saying, is that it's a conflict of interest if you're a tutor, it's a conflict of interest if you're a coach and you have an outside sports program, is that, I just-
Yeah, so, yeah, I have no problem. Tutoring, you're not supposed to tutor kids that are in your class, so I don't perceive that as a conflict of interest. If you tutor kids in your class that you're giving a grade, that is problematic, and we have a policy that's against that. Do I think that there's a problem that coaches have travel teams or have outside sports programs that are not-for-profit, and it's for-profit, and they're making money, and then they're putting kids on a team? Yes, I think that is a significant conflict of interest. Do I think that people that have private businesses in our community, that because of the position that we put them in, have a direct gain from that? Yes, I do, and I think that it's wrong.
Then I-
I think it's very wrong, that's my personal opinion, everybody at this table has a right to their own opinion, but it's very blatant, and I don't know how we address it, and maybe that's something that we bring up next week and we have time to think about it.
No, I would really like to vote on this policy today, because we, you know, we've punted on this policy for months now, like, we keep punting, you know, and we do that, I think partly because we're trying, because there's good faith, like, there's good faith, you know, I have faith in everybody at this table, and so I think that there has been good faith, and I think that it's time to have a discussion, and then we'll just vote on it.
Well, I'm having that discussion, and if everybody wants to vote on it, do you think it's okay that we hire coaches that have outside teams that have direct financial gain, or people who pick cast members for plays or musicals that have a direct financial gain, that could be adversarial to any student that's auditioning?
Yes.
Because, well, I wouldn't, I don't mean to cut you off, Chris, but-
Yes, I do.
You think it's a conflict?
No, I think it's fine, I think that if there is, if someone feels that there is a conflict of interest, we have a policy, and they can go forward and say, we have a conflict of interest, it's there, I can see it.
But we're creating the conflict, we know that these outside coaches, and we know outside people have a direct conflict with their businesses.
But then, are you looking to, I mean, are we looking to do hire and firing right now, or are we looking to make a policy?
I'm asking, do we need a policy that says the board cannot appoint people that have outside personal financial gain to positions that are in direct conflict with what they do?
My concern is that by taking that action, we would be assuming that these people would make their educational decisions based on their outside interests, and we don't have proof of that.
There is proof, it's a perceived conflict of interest by hiring them.
If we have proof, then it can be brought to the superintendent or the principal's attention, but I don't feel comfortable saying that because you have some other activity outside of your job in the district, that you are automatically-
An activity, a business, a business in which they're making personal profit off of our students, because they think it would be a benefit to them to participate in that, and it's a disadvantage to students who either A, can't pay, or don't want to pay, so you're going to, you think that's okay?
As long as they are rendering their decisions on what, whether putting kids on teams or putting kids into a play, as long as that, they are keeping the two separate-
How would you know? You wouldn't know.
Well, we have-
That's what the conflict is.
We have some procedures in place, for example, with the casting of the plays to safeguard that, we have when there are-
Actually, you don't.
When there are tryouts, we have safeguards.
You don't.
Okay.
I think one of the-
Mike, go ahead, Holly.
One of the things that is clear is that there are different opinions on this issue, and that speaks to the issue with putting something like this into a policy, because people are going to interpret it in different ways. And when we met as a policy committee to look at, and we did look at all the language that you sent and the materials that you sent, and we looked through it, and we felt like the language in the policies covered broadly enough, the issues that we were talking about, in such a way that we were not going to unduly limit administrative discretion and the ability for people to exercise their professional judgment.
To meet our needs.
And that's how we arrived at the decision that we did.
Mike, my concern, and Mike sort of hit the nail on the head when he said, there's no proof, the whole idea of a perceived conflict of interest is there's not going to be proof, and unless you define perceived conflict of interest, people are not going to know that the fact that they don't have proof of it, that it's a perception, and perceptions do not have proof, maybe they do, but generally, a perception, as Mike pointed out, is the way a community member views the issue, whatever the issue is. And to Chris's point about having faith, I have faith in everybody, but my concern is that hope is not a strategy, and to hope that everybody is going to do the right thing without any guidance, without identifying what a perceived conflict of interest is, basically creates a big gaping hole in this policy. And the other problem with the policy is that it's all self-reporting, there's no oversight, and again, it's a hope that people will do the right thing.
And it's not, it's not just all self-reporting, because any person who seeks to report a potential conflict, so whether they think there is one or not, can make that report, so I would just-
And it's, there has been reports of it, and nobody's really addressing the issue.
Well, that's also true, there have been reports over the years, certainly before I was on the board and since I've been on the board, where there have been conflicts, and it doesn't seem that, with all due respect, either it hasn't been brought to the board, or maybe it hasn't been brought to the administration, but certainly I've had parents come to me as a board member and before I was on the board, talking about some of these conflicts, be it theater, be it music, be it sports, and the tutoring issue. These things have come up, and I'm concerned that by approving this policy, we're just creating a giant hole that people are going to go through.
I guess I don't see what the hole is there, we are, through this policy, we're telling any person, any member of the community, any member of, any parent, any student, any member of the faculty who seeks to report a potential conflict of interest, so you don't need proof, you can just see, I see this potentially being a problem, you can contact a supervisor, chief and business financial officer, director of HR, or the superintendent who will make a written report of it, and then, who will then, where appropriate, take reasonable steps to minimize that conflict. That could include not letting them do that position, but I don't think we can create a policy that makes those decisions, because it's a case-by-case decision, is it, we take, we change the casting procedure so that there are multiple people involved in this casting procedure, I believe we have made such similar changes, or is it, we say, you cannot do that position, or is it that we say, you know, there has to be a second person involved in this? There are many different ways you could solve each individual problem, and I think we're trying to create a policy that would allow our administration to use their judgment to figure out the best situation to deal with each individual situation.
I think part of the problem may be the fact that there are four attorneys on the board and people on the board who have experience on the board, and therefore, most of us know what a conflict of interest is when we see it, but I am not convinced that the general public, who is not steeped in ethics and conflicts of interest the way the four lawyers on the board are and other people on the board, in the same way, and that's why, I think, having a definition that will give some guidance as to what a conflict of interest is, is important to have in this policy.
And just because NISBA doesn't have the language, doesn't mean we shouldn't have the language, there are many, many policies out there that have perceived conflict of interest, I think the state of New York actually might have it. Willow, do you know if the state of New York has that language, perceived conflict of interest and getting direct financial gain?
I mean, I think you're sort of comparing apples and oranges with that one, and it's two sets of laws that govern public officers versus the people we're talking about who work for, you know, a thousand extra dollars once a year because they're coaching or assistant coaching a team, the thing that-
We're not talking about that, we're talking about large sums of money, private businesses and travel teams, they can make more than a thousand dollars being a coach.
I mean, I just don't know that we're, we talked about disadvantaging students, and we have such sort of rich talent in this district, we have very good educators and incredible athletes and artists and music teachers who are able to sort of go above and beyond to share that, and to say that no one that works for the district is allowed to make any additional money doing something that they're good at, or that they've spent a lot of money to be licensed in, just doesn't, I think that disadvantages the district more than, more than a lot of other things we've discussed.
Well, what's interesting is, I talked to the attorney at NISBA last year, and I talked to our other attorney, I won't name who, but they all see the conflict. talked to our other attorney, I won't name who, but they all see the conflict. The two attorneys, one at NISBA and one that works for us, they see the conflict. So I'm confused as to why we're sitting here debating this when it's very clear that you should not be hiring people who are making money from their businesses and we're hiring them to the position. It is absolutely straightforward, there's no guessing, it's clear as day and yet we're still going to do it. And we're all sitting here making excuses about it because what? Are we friends with them? Are we, I, I don't understand.
I don't feel like we're making excuses. I think we're having an honest discussion about what a policy should be. And, and our, and the policies did, Jody, correct me if I'm wrong, last year, I know we've been, we've been looking at this for a lengthy period of time and they did go to our school attorneys for review. And they said that they thought that they were in line with what they should be.
I'm not saying that this is a bad policy. I, I, I'm not even going to question like, maybe this is great going forward, but I'm saying we have current appointments outside of this that we have a policy that makes exceptions to the people that we've put in these positions, that we reported currently.
I think what the policy does is it asks the administration to review those individual situations to ensure that it's not creating a conflict. And I, we've seen examples where the administration has done that and has reviewed it and has come up with a conclusion. And I think if an individual Board Member doesn't agree with that conclusion, it doesn't mean that it's wrong and it doesn't mean that we're not protecting against conflict of interest.
Well, I, I'm going to say I've had conversations with, with people or even administrators that might agree with me. So I, I don't know why this is so difficult to either A, come up with a policy that says the Board of Education cannot hire or appoint people into positions that are in direct conflict with what they do and they make money off of it and our students. Either we make a hiring practice policy that the Board, a new policy, or somehow we revamp it. We can't have exceptions to the policy. If there is a conflict of interest and it's very clear and we have them, we need to address them. You're sitting here saying, "Okay, the administration has it in their discretion," but we all know that there are conflicts of interest and nobody's addressing it. I don't mean that disrespectfully, I'm sorry.
Perceived conflict.
Perceived conflict of interest. Well, you know, it's not really perceived when, when you know that there's definitely a conflict. It, it's a real conflict, it's not a perceived conflict. When we know that they're putting kids on a team that they have on their travel team, there's an advantage. That's not perceived, that's a real conflict of interest, Mike.
So can I just interject because I, I don't know if it was last year or not, but there was a, I think a request at one point, the Board wanting to know if we would, BCTA members would share what they're doing privately outside of the school district. And I think the response from the BCTA is, "It's none of the Board's business as long as there's no conflict," and our attorneys concurred with that. So we, to say that, make a policy like that would probably not hiring policy that you're referring to.
Anyone else?
Well, it's, it's interesting because, you know, I had a conversation with our school attorney last year and they saw that there is a conflict of interest. It's clear, maybe our policy doesn't address it, but that was stated to me by our own attorney and our attorney at NISBA. It's very clear we have a conflict of interest. So I, I don't-
I think right now we're focusing, we need to focus on the policies that we have in front of us tonight and-
Well, because-
Based on our, the Policy Committee's evaluation of the materials and looking at the language and, and we have looked at it extensively. I am comfortable with them as they are currently written.
I don't believe you guys have worked hard on it, but-
I, I know that you and the Committee have worked hard on it, you've taken it back multiple times, which I very much appreciate, but without having a definition of perceived conflict or, or potential conflict, I cannot in good conscience support this policy. I mean, if, if the Board votes it in, which I expect they will from the conversation, obviously I will support and uphold it, but I cannot vote in good conscience for a policy that doesn't include guidelines, which, which a definition would, to help the public and people not steeped in conflict of interest and ethics understand what it is they're looking at.
And I would concur with Jonathan, I would vote on it as well. And the fact that we've had issues raised to us with conflicts of interest that haven't been addressed and we're making a policy that has exceptions to the rule so we can pick and choose who we want when it meets our needs, is very disheartening and I, I will not vote on it as well. I think it doesn't have the appropriate language and I think it makes exceptions to the rules. And I'm not saying that any of you didn't work very hard on the policy, I appreciate the work that you did and you took it back, you reviewed it. I know you, in good faith, looked at it, but I think that we are making decisions based on not good practice, that's all.
All right, let's take a vote and I would ask that people raise their hands for their votes, so, to help our clerk determine the, the outcome of the vote. So all those in favor?
Which policy, I mean?
Both policies, 2160 and 9120.1. Okay. All in favor of approving the first reading?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Next, we will recognize visitors on a non-agenda item. If there's anybody who would like to address the Board, please come up to the microphone and state your name. Okay. Future meetings on Tuesday, May 21st is the annual school district budget vote and Board of Education election. That day, there will also be a facilities committee meeting that morning, am I correct?
15th at 7:30 a.m.
Oh, that's at the 15th, okay. And there will be a Policy Committee meeting occurring at 7 o'clock before the counting of the ballots. The next meeting after that is May 22nd at 7:00 p.m. Will it be here in the LMC or?
The May meeting will be, I'm not sure about the June meetings.
Okay. And a 6 o'clock anticipated executive session. We will be having a retirement reception for the teachers and staff members who are retiring this year on Thursday, May 30th at 4:30 p.m. at Norman Side Country Club. And the next Board meeting after that will be on June 5th. Meeting is at 7:00 p.m., anticipated executive session at 6:00 p.m. and then the tenure reception for our new tenure teachers will be at 6:30 p.m. There's no reason for us to go back into executive session, so can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you. Pick students, come and sign out and if you have any paperwork you need signed.